We're changing, we're changing.
We're changing, we're changing.
Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Dania Beach Regular City Meeting on September the 25th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Here.
Commissioner Romoli?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. At this time, if everyone would please bow their heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, if you would please read our Statement of Decorum.
Yes, Mayor. Individuals, excuse me, individuals who wish to make any citizen comments under that portion of the City Commission Agenda or who otherwise want to address the City Commission must first be registered with the City Clerk. Forms are available outside of the City Commission chambers and must be given to the Clerk before the meeting. Others who want to address the Commission on any matter must first be recognized by the Mayor. All such persons must use the podium in the Commission Chamber. No more than one person at a time may address the Commission from the podium. Comments are only to be made to the City Commission and are not to be directed to the audience or City's staff. No individual shall make any slanderous or unduly repetitive remarks or engage in any other form of behavior that disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting as determined by the Mayor. The Mayor often allows applause during ceremonial or celebratory portions of the meeting, such as proclamations, presentations, awards, or public safety recognitions, as these are not action items and are intended to honor individuals or events. However, to safeguard an orderly meeting and to preclude intimidation of speakers, speakers on agenda items or designated public comments, the Mayor ordinarily precludes clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts. Based upon the foregoing, no individual may speak directly to or address the Mayor, Commissioner, or City's staff. Comments are to be only directed to the Commission as a whole. No clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support of or opposition to a speaker or his or her remarks shall be permitted. No signs or placards shall be permitted in the Commission Chamber. If any person's conduct, as determined by the Mayor, is found to be disruptive or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, the person may be asked to be, by the Mayor, to leave the Commission Chambers. If the person does not leave and the conduct persists, the City Police Department will be requested to escort the individual from the City Commission Chambers. All cellular phones are to be silenced during the meeting. All persons exiting the Commission Chamber shall do so quietly. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next, we have Item Three, Budget Hearing Items. Item 3.1. Eve, if you would please read Item 3.1.
Yes, yes, Mary, well. It is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, as required by the City Charter in Section 200.065 of the Florida Statutes, approving the proposed mileage rate necessary to be levied for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for operating purposes, establishing the debt mileage rate approved by the electorate, providing for a public hearing when the objections may be heard and questions concerning the same be answered, providing for conflicts and an effective date. And if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd just like to read the ad valorem for tonight's meeting. The operating municipal mileage rate will be 5.9998 mils, which reflects no change from the city's current fiscal year mileage rate. This operating mileage rate represents a 6.03% increase over the rolled back rate of 5.6588 mils, as computed in accordance with the provisions of Section 200.065 Subsection 1 of the Florida Statutes. The voter-approved debt service mileage rate is 0.0985 mils, in accordance with the provisions of law presented in Chapter 200 of the Florida Statutes. Therefore, the city's aggregate mileage rate is the 6.0983 mils, which consists of the 5.9998 mils for operating and the 0.0985 mils for debt service. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, and Finance. Yes. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Public hearing, public comments are closed. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve Item 3.1.
I have a motion from Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have a second? Vice Mayor?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, Item 3.1 passes unanimously. We will move on to Item 3.2. Eve, if you would please read Item 3.2.
A resolution of the City Commission, as required by the City Charter in Section 200.065 of the Florida Statutes, approving the city's final annual budget for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026, providing for a public hearing where objections will be heard and questions concerning the budget will be answered, provided for conflicts and an effective date. This is a finance item and a public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Guzman. I'm CPA and Chief Financial Officer for the City of Dania Beach. And with me is Barbara Trinka, our Finance, Deputy Finance Director. She's a Dania Beach resident as well and an employee of the city. So we're very excited to have her. The proposed budget that is presented for approval tonight outlines significant investments throughout several areas throughout the city, specifically in alignment with the unanimously adopted strategic plan back in 2021 and now in 2025. Many of those investments, some of them are related to personnel. For example, this year, we have the additional position of a police officer, leading the total number from five years ago now to 28 additional public safety members, 14 firefighters, and now 14 police officers. We'll also be adding an additional communication specialist to support another initiative of the Commission, which is to expand communication and transparency throughout the city. And finally, our CW Thomas Park will be opening in early 2026, and that will require some additional support and staffing. It's minor in nature, however, it still needs the support, and that will start in 2026. And then moving on to additional initiatives of the Commission that directly impact the Dania Beach community. There's a lot of investments in this budget related to storm water, to sewer improvements, to maintaining the parks, to continue to support the senior and youth programs that we have at our parks. Additionally, we have funding for paving up their streets. We have landscaping. We have an outdoor beautification funding as well in this budget. And now I'm going to turn it over to Barbara, who's going to go over other details about the budget.
Thank you. So Jamie's a hard lead. That was fantastic. It's hard to summarize, you know, if we step back. At the end of the day, we're really proud to present this budget, right? Why? Because it's the cumulative efforts of the department directors, the deputy directors, and all their team that are dedicated to a line item review. We look for cost savings. We look for, for opportunities where they may not have been always looked at and said, let's, let's, let's review the budget. It's such a line item, and that's why we feel so confident about bringing it forward this evening, is that dedicated effort to that. And so while we do that, we still are maintaining our level of service that's expected, right? So that's, that's the other component. Yes, our over almost $157 million budget, the total budget in itself, right? Over 27 million is dedicated to infrastructure, the things that Jamie was talking about, the stormwater improvements that are so needed, and the infrastructure and our parks and our improvements. So we're very, very proud to bring it forward. And with that is also the benefit of this line item review. We can say that our budget, our operating budget expenditures went down over 10%, right? While we're doing that maintaining level of service, while we're, we're aligning with our strategic plan and all of the initiatives you have set forward. So just a few really highlights. Yes, ad valorem taxes are a significant revenue source for the general fund. It is not the only revenue source, right? We have grants, we have funding, there's other funding sources. So when we talk about how do we make this all happen, it's really important to note, yes, ad valorem is, is a critical point of that. We just wanted to bring to your attention that, that sometimes that property tax bill can be a little confusing, right? There's a lot of things in there. And right now, really what the city, what city gets out of that tax bill is really only 30 cents on the dollar. The other 70 cents goes to, to other things such as, that are in Broward County, other taxing agencies as well. So we just wanted to bring that, you know, bring that to light and make sure that it was clear to everyone how that works. So with that, I just thank you so much.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. I know this has been a lot of work on your behalf, and I really, I just want to say what a fantastic job you guys have done. So we appreciate that. And with that, we will let you know that this is a public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak for or against Item 3.2. Seeing none. I, uh, do I have a motion? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Make a motion to approve Item 3.2.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, Item 3.2 passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission, and thank you, Finance. We will move on to Item Four, which is Presentations and Special Event Approvals. We have none. We will move on to Item Five, Proclamations. We have none. And so we will move on to Item Six, Administrative Reports. City Manager, Madam City Manager?
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Mr. Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, City Team, residents that are here with us today, residents that are watching at home. We are extremely, extremely proud, first and foremost, of serving this amazing community. And as our Finance Director and our Deputy Finance Director said, we are always looking for opportunities. And a lot of those opportunities come from going to Tallahassee, as we did this year, what have we done with, with the Mayor, with the Commissioners. I know the, the Vice Mayor was, was in Tallahassee, in Washington, DC. So it's really a full-court press, building those relationships. This year, I am very, very pleased to inform you, but because of those relationships, we were able to seize, and working very close with our City Attorney, we were able to seize $1,497,054. And we have officially received of that, it was a settlement for PFAS, which are, you know, were found in, in the water. And you know that we have a water department and we have a water plant. And the environment is extremely important to us and the services, services that we provide you. Out of that settlement, we have already officially received $912,478.20. So what we are now exploring is how we can best invest in our water plant as we seek to elevate not just our, our, our level of service, but our standard of, of operations cleanliness and efficiency. So we're going to work very closely with our Deputy Finance Director, very closely as well with our Deputy City Manager and the Water Plant Team, Fernando, our Public Services Director, and our City Engineer, to bring forth some initiatives for our Mayor and Commission to consider and invest that settlement money in, in our water plant. As we approach October 11th and kick off our Dania After Dark season with our very popular Oktoberfest, I am pleased to report that as of today, we have already sold 260 tickets for our VIP experience. Please note that while we have 300 as limited capacity for the VIP experience that, and we expect a sellout, that the Special Events Division of Parks and Recreation could not do a better job. But we also wanted to let you know, in addition to marking your calendar for October 11th, that this is a free event, and you can also enjoy the, the entertainment, the activities that we're going to have for kids. So please mark that on your calendar and join us for Oktoberfest on October 11th. We're very excited that the RFP for the conversion of the sports courts to pickleball at Frost Park is moving forward. Our goal is to always see how can we expand what we offer from youth to seniors in our, in our community, and always pivoting in regards to what's out there. We know that pickleball is very popular, so we're very excited that that is coming forward. So we look forward to, to a groundbreaking in regards to that beautiful sports court that we're working on. So as our Finance Director alluded to today, 30 cents of the, of the dollar as taxpayers come to our city. But it's very, very important to know that 50 million of your tax dollars go to Broward County public schools. And for the past year and a half, two out of our three schools, you know, our historic Collins Elementary and our middle school, Awesome Olson, really have been on the, on the shopping block. But I have to say, our Mayor, our Vice Mayor, Commissioner, all the Commissioners, it's, it's been a full-court press. And last week, I had the honor to be joined by, by Mayor Davis and Commissioner Llewellyn. And even though Commissioner Romoli and, and the Vice Mayor were out of town, and Commissioner Ryan was coaching Little League Football here, it was nonstop calls and, and ensuring that we got the word out. We felt that we were very, very effective. We were at South Broward High last week, standing Romoli, it was packed, and our voices were very heard, because we are not going to sit idle while you, as taxpayers, are contributing $50 million a year to Broward County schools, and the threat of our schools being closed continues, because that affects the psyche of our kids and our community. So we just wanted to let you know that we also have a game plan that has been unanimously approved by this Commission, and 100% will be paid out of new construction monies in an effort to keep Olson open and begin to grow Olson, because we are growing in population, and we have de-approved projects that are out there. So we will not sit idle while there is an attempt to close our schools. So we're very excited about that. So we're looking at a Phase One investment of those seven acres at Olson to turn them into a park. And the investment, there will be approximately $7 million in new construction money, and we wanted to give you an update on that. We're also very, very excited because a priority of this Commission and the unanimously adopted strategic master plan is how can we create stability here in our city? The stability that is not seen in cities and counties that surround us in both Dade and Broward County. Well, one of the things that we took on with the leadership of our HR Director Linda Gonzalez and Ann Maris and the entire HR team, which is really one of the best, is how do we retain, recruit, promote the very best, and at the same time, create that stability here in our team? So we, we targeted turnover, and I am very, very pleased to report that in 2024, we had a 19.4 turnover rate. What we have achieved in 2025 is nothing short of remarkable. We've been able to cut that by 70.8%. Our turnover rate for 2025 is 5.67%. And that could not happen if it wasn't for the support of this Mayor, this Vice Mayor, and this Commission. Because, folks, let me tell you, our goal is how can we best serve you? And we can't do that without supporting the men and women in the arena that are out there in the, in the trenches, our BSO, Public Services, the people that are there ensuring that you are taken care of 365 days, 24 hours a day. So we're very, very excited about that. I am also pleased to report, under the leadership of Eleanor Norena and our Deputy City Manager, that our code compliance team has successfully completed the U.S. Coast Guard Boating Safety Course, and now is certified to navigate our waterways of Dania Beach. In addition, Director Norena has established requirements ensuring that anyone operating a vessel must maintain a clean driving record and possess prior boating experience. I know that this is something that we worked on within Mayor Ryan since he came on board. So whether it's your streets or whether it's our waterway, we are elevating how we serve you with always, always putting your safety as priority number one. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Manager, for that very thorough and in-depth report on our city. We will move on to Item 6.2, City Attorney.
No, no report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Item 6.3, City Clerk.
Your upcoming meetings are October 14th, CRA Board Meeting at 6:00 PM, following the City Commission Meeting at 7:00 PM, and then October 28th, City Commission Meeting at 7:00 PM. That's it.
Thank you, City Clerk. And up next, we have Item Seven, our Public Safety Reports. And we have our very own Captain Jason Tarala and a very special guest that he's bringing with him. I will let him introduce her.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, Deputy City Clerk. And tonight, I'll introduce, we have our Major of the South End, and who's my direct boss, Major Stephanie Coker. And she came tonight to be here to support us, support the Commission, and support us on a great evening tonight as we all, you all approve the budget and support the Broward Sheriff's Office going forward for another five years as well. And here's our Major Coker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and City Staff. I just want to come forward and say thank you. Thank you for a great partnership. Thank you for everything that you do in believing in the Broward Sheriff's Office. We couldn't do this without your support. And so I just wanted to come forward and truly just thank you. Thank the residents of Dana Beach for also supporting us and believing in us. And we just look forward to continue partnership. So thank you all.
Thank you, Major. You always show up for us as well. This isn't your first rodeos and we appreciate you always coming and supporting Dana Beach.
It's very important that you know, like whenever I need anything, whenever I call the major, she puts Dana Beach at the front, the front. We're number one with her. And all your other cities are going to be mad for me saying that. But she does, she takes care of Dana Beach, number one. And whenever I call her for a request, tell her we need something, she gets it done for us right away. It's amazing. She's a fantastic boss and a fantastic leader.
100%.
So I'd like to start off tonight by letting you know, we had a very successful beginning of the Jewish holiday season. We have our directed patrols that we always do every year. And we'll keep it going for October 1st, which will be Yom Kippur. And we'll have that for those two nights. We make sure that we go to every single Jewish facility, religious facility, and we make sure we make contact with the congregation and the rabbis. We check on them, we make sure they're okay. And we do that for both high holidays. I also want to let you know, as a follow-up to what we did last month, when we had a meeting, the first responder program that we talked about with the gentleman that came from our Community Affairs Division, we had our first training session today with our five deputies to get that training moving forward. So they got training today for three hours. And I believe they'll have a second training. And after the second training, we will be equipped and have them on the road with us in Dana Beach. So I'll let you guys know as soon as that will take place. Couple really good arrests that our deputies made over the last week. Our K-9 deputies, they were alerted to a stolen vehicle that was driven and was parked over at the Motel 6. They kept surveillance video, they kept surveillance on the vehicle. And once the occupant attempted to get back inside the car, they suppressed the vehicle. The driver of the car ran from the vehicle and he was apprehended by our K-9 unit a short while later. That individual was charged with the possession and stealing that motor vehicle. And he also had multiple outstanding felony warrants to include armed robbery with a firearm, possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, grand theft of a firearm by a felon, possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, burglar and occupied of grand theft and possession of felony narcotics. So it was a fantastic arrest to get that individual off our streets of Dana Beach into jail. And another really good arrest, again, we were on the area of South Federal Highway conducting proactive checks at the areas up and down South Federal Highway. One of our deputies of the vehicle leaving an area that he knew is known for narcotics. He conducted a traffic stop on the vehicle. And during his investigation, he was able to place that driver in custody for a traffic violation. And searched into arrest, he ended up finding multiple felony narcotics. And that driver, that vehicle, ended up being charged with possession with intent to distribute cocaine, also possession with intent to distribute MDMA, as well as possession with intent to distribute marijuana. So another great job, another great proactive arrest by our deputies. And lastly, we have our annual coffee with a cop. I know last year Commissioner Llewellyn came, the Southern Mayor came, I think Commissioner Remoli came, and I think Commissioner Ryan came. Vice Mayor, I think you came last year too, I don't remember. But I hope to see you guys this year. I think I saw you last year, I don't remember.
Make them feel good.
But it's a really, really nice event. We had a great turnout last year. We had a lot of people, Major Coker was there with us last year. It really is a nice event for us to meet out there with the community. We have coffee with all the residents that come. So it's going to be, and for everyone out here in the community, please, if you can come, it's going to be Wednesday morning at 10:00 AM at the Resurrection Coffee at 2612 Griffin Road. I really do hope everyone here tonight can come. You can come meet with all of us, you can come talk to us one-on-one. You can talk to us about anything. It's just a way for us to meet with you, for you to meet with us, and really have a great partnership with us in the community. So please, if you can make it, come out.
Isn't it also Detective Hupstlas Coffee?
Why you got to say that?
Well, I mean, I just want you to let them know why they should really come out this time if they haven't come out in the past. Because he's been such a great community partner, so I'll let you...
Absolutely. You let the cat out of the bag, Mayor. Unfortunately, many people in this room know Detective Hupstlas, they've known him for 25 years that he's served the residents of Dana Beach. But he is planning on retiring effective in January. And it breaks my heart because I've known him for 22 years. And everyone knows what he does here for us in Dana Beach. He's amazing, him and Tarrick together. But yeah, he plans on retiring in January. He's done 25 years and, you know, he's earned his right to retire and move on to his next chapter of his life.
So come on out and support him.
Please come out and support him because he will be there. So for everyone that does know him, that'll be an opportunity for you to come see him before he does plan on retiring in a couple months.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Major, for coming. We appreciate you and all that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next, we have our very own Chief Sergio Pelissero from BSO Fire.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff and the great citizens of Dana Beach. So last month, calls for service. We have 710 total calls for service. That includes Station 1 units, Station 17 units. Out of those calls, 78 were fire-related, 632 were EMS-related. So they're all medical calls. I did want to point out, we do have some high call volumes and fall injuries. We're having, seeing a lot of falls. We have sick person calls, that could be somebody with a headache and trouble breathing, a lot of trouble breathing. And then the one that was, that rose a little bit was fire medical service calls. The service calls are something as simple as somebody seeing a cat stuck in a tree. They'll call for us to come get the cat or the duck stuck in the drain. So those are busy. I mean, with all the rain, we have a lot of ducks going in the drain. So those are busy calls. But it still takes our units out there to get these animals, get them help. Early August, our Rescue 201, which was our oldest rescue, went out to get refurbished. And from what I was told, they'll be back in December also. So we're going to have two brand-new trucks come December. We're going to have our Quint that's coming back and we're going to have our Rescue that's coming back. So hopefully, like I said, January, we'll do a push-in. So now we'll have two trucks to push in. We'll make sure not to try to run you over this time. And our Life Safety Educator, he's been heavily engaging with all our local schools. He participated at Collins Elementary, a meet and greet session. And I got to share a story about him because the other day, Captain Tarala, he was out and he saw a couple ladies was trying to get, they had just bought a car seat. They approached them about getting this car seat in. So immediately, he called our Life Safety Educator. David Walker ran out to the location and it started pouring in the middle of rain. He made sure the ladies were somewhere dry and he took care of making sure that they can get this car seat installed properly so they can go pick up their granddaughter. So that just goes to show you that the partnership here between police and fire, we call each other, we're there for each other. And, you know, we have a new team member being David and he's, just like any other Dana employee, we go above and beyond. So I just want to recognize his name. And again, on behalf of Sheriff Tony, police, fire, we thank you all for your support. So I appreciate you more than you know.
And we feel the same about you, Chief. You always go above and beyond. Thank you for what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a great night. And he doesn't know I'm going to do this, but since you mentioned Collins Elementary, I'm just going to have Principal Eve stand up in the back. He is the new principal of Collins Elementary. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us and being a part of our community and this process. And thank you once again to our Chief Pelissero. We will now move on to item eight, our citizens' comments. Up first, we have Ms. Janet McCombs. Please state your name and address for the record.
Janet McCombs, 41 Southwest 5th Street. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. I just wanted to personally come and thank the city for planting a tree in memory of my husband, Terrill McCombs. He is an eighth-generation Floridian, a fourth-generation Broward, and a native Danaan, all his life lived here in the same home. And you planted a beautiful live oak tree in his memory, which was his favorite tree. It's planted right on the back entrance to the garage and there's a marker there for you. I just want to thank everybody for keeping his memory and legacy alive. He was a very special person to the whole city.
He truly was. Thank you, Ms. McCombs, for coming and sharing that with us because Terrill, he was Mr. Dana Beach. And so we thank you for coming and expressing your gratitude because we loved him and we certainly do miss him. But we will have him here and we appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Next, we will have Ms. Linda Kramer. If you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Linda Kilmer. My address is 911 Nautilus Isle. We also have a house 959 Nautilus Isle and a condominium in the Danaans. So greetings to you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Management. And I recognize many of you, I'm not a speaker, a public speaker, so... And I wasn't prepared to speak today, but I am here to share with you a real public safety concern that we have on our street. With all the rain and the flooding that we've been having, apparently, one of the drains was concreted in. And we have a major flooding problem going across our entire street at Nautilus Isle. The... Many of our neighbors are walkers. We walk over to the Green Belt and around the neighborhood. And what we find ourselves doing is having to take our shoes off to walk through. We had bulk pickup a few weeks ago. There were some incidents with some broken glass. People are walking through this at night, in the evenings, water up to our shins. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of this problem. I know that there are some projects underway. I just wanted you to hear it from us personally. Several of the neighbors are here. So we thank you in advance for all you're going to do for us to get this resolved.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. You did a great job. Hold on, Vice Mayor wants to... Hold on.
If I recall, on those out there, there's drains that are on the street that go out into the canal. Is that correct? Okay, so you're saying that one of those is blocked up? Okay, we'll get the address to our Public Work Director and we'll get someone out there to take a look at it for you.
Hold on just a second. If you are here for...
If you're here for either 11.1 or 12.1, which is relating to the vacation of property, your public comments will go to that time period, okay, for that item? So there are a number of people who just said citizen comments, but based upon what you've described, I think that's where you want to be, okay? So the only question I have is Michelle Wilcox?
She's for the item.
Are you for the items?
She is. Are there any other citizens' comments that are not related to those two items? Okay, thank you. So we will wait till those items come up and then you will be able to speak at that time. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Does the commission have any items that they wish to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. Next up, we have item 10, bids and requests for proposals. We have item 10.1. Eve, if you would please read item 10.1.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the commission to approve the top-ranked firm that responded to the city's request for proposal 25-23 for Frost Park Sports Court Conversion Project and to authorize contract negotiations. To begin with, the top-ranked firm, provided for conflicts and an effective date, this is a Parks and Recreation item.
Good evening, Frankie Lazo, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Team, residents. So we're excited for this project. It's a long time coming. And this is to convert the courts at Frost Park and resurface them. So what we're bringing the item for is for approval for the top, to rank the item and then to enter negotiations with the top firm.
Thank you. So do we have, do I have a motion or a discussion for item 10.1?
I just have a question.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Just a quick question, Frankie. So is this part of the initial phase of the renovation of that park? Or is this a separate thing?
So this is, it's in alignment with our master plan to bring pickleball and obviously have, you know, upgraded courts. This is part of maintenance. So resurfacing courts and making improvements is, you know, we should do that every four to six years. So this is just maintenance-based. When we go into the, you know, full master plan and full renovation, that'll be a different stage.
That's going to be probably a couple of years from now.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's not part of that, it's a separate thing that's being done.
Yes, this is just a routine maintenance and improvements for now. But there's future long-term plans.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Remoli. All in favor, say aye. All right.
Thank you.
Item 10.1 passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. We will move on to item 11, quasi-judicial and public hearings. We have item 11.1. Eve, if you would please read item 11.1.
Yes, Mayor, just one thing, just for everybody's attention. Item 11.1, administration is asking for that to be continued to coincide with the second reading of the ordinance because it's a final action that would be required. So it's a little too early for this to be heard, this portion to be heard. But I have to read it into the record anyway and you can have a public hearing on the continuance, okay? It's a resolution of the City Commission pursuant to the requirements of Section 655-40 of the LDC approving applicants Tammy and Ellis James's request to waive the plating requirement for the right-of-way being vacated adjacent to 255 Northwest 12th Avenue in Dana Beach and providing an effective date. This is a community development item. And just so you understand, you can only have a waiver of plat if the land has actually been vacated, which is why it should coincide with second reading if that is to go forward.
So we will move on to the next item.
We need to open a further continuance, a public hearing on the continuance and then a motion for the board of the commission.
So this is a public hearing and the subject is...
Just to be clear, this... Sorry about that. I have nails and I don't know how to use them. The subject of this item is just whether this one item should be continued to the next meeting, which would be October 14th.
So this is just on the continuance. So this is a public hearing. Do I have any... Anyone who wishes to speak about the continuance on the public hearing for this item? Okay.
Just to be clear, you will have an opportunity to speak on the actual vacation, which would be the next item.
Okay. So we can make a motion, yeah?
Close the public hearing, please.
Public comments are closed. Public hearing is closed for item 11.1. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll make a motion to continue 11.1 until the time of the second reading of the ordinance? Is that the best way to put it?
And anticipate it to be October 14th. But yeah, yes, your motion's sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
We have a continuance to October 14th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Remoli. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, item 11.1 is continuing until October the 14th. If we can move on to item 12.1. Eve, if you could please read item 12.1.
Yes, Mayor, it's an ordinance of the City Commission pursuant to the requirements of Section 655-40... of Section 655-40 of the LDC approving the right-of-way vacation request submitted by the applicants, the adjacent property owners, Tammy and Ellis James, for the property.
Why don't you wait until?
Sure.
Yeah, I know. Let's just wait until it's over so that it's, it's clear.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Submitted by the applicants, adjacent property owners, Tammy and Ellis James, for the property generally located between Northwest 2nd Place and Northwest 12th Avenue, respectively, which consists of approximately 100 by 70 feet of Northwest 12th Avenue, lying east of the applicant's property located at 255 Northwest 12th Avenue, which right-of-way is generally described as Northwest 12th Avenue and is generally located within the city of Dania Beach. Providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date, this is a community development item.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director in Community Development, and this application is for a variance request for a portion of Northwest 12th Avenue. So the property is zoned, neighborhood residential. It is within the Regional Activity Center. The site is Northwest 12th Avenue, but it's the very northern portion of that roadway. It is a dead-end road today. This is like a location map of the property. You can see the canal is on the top of the screen, so this is south of that area. This is a close-up of the particular site. So the applicant lives in the home that's in the pink square. The yellow rectangle is the right-of-way that's being requested to be vacated. This is a photo of that right-of-way. You can see the applicant's home on the left-hand of the screen. There are some city infrastructures located in that right-of-way. The solar streetlight will be removed by Public Services. There is also a fire hydrant, catch basin, and underground there is a water line. But those are going to remain, and the Public Services has worked with the City Attorney's Office to establish access easements, should that be approved, that the access easements would then be established so that the city can continue to access those infrastructure items. So some of the existing conditions on the site, you can see on the screen, the pink and yellow rectangles are still there. That's the home, the property owner's, the applicant's home, and the yellow is the area requesting to be vacated. The long blue property that's vacant today is owned by St. Ruth's Church. It is currently vacant. It does have access on the east side, so the right hand of the screen, side of the screen, there is a roadway with, that provides access to the property. That property does extend all the way west and touches the right-of-way to be vacated, but it is unimproved today. The, also, the properties identified in yellow have provided a letter of no objection to the vacation request, and I'm probably skipping in my presentation, but typically when a right-of-way is vacated, half goes to each of the adjacent property owners. In this case, the Dania Economic Development Corporation that manages that property to the east declined to accept that property. They didn't want it. So in this case, the entire right-of-way would be vacated and given to the property owner if the vacation is approved. The request, as I've talked about, is to vacate the roadway, which is adjacent to the applicant's home. The property owner to the east declined to accept the right-of-way should it be vacated. If the vacation is approved, the property owner and the applicant must record that access easement that we spoke about and pay the additional property tax that would occur from this additional land that would be part of her property. The vacation of right-of-way, the Land Development Code does require evidence of notification of all public and private utilities, that they have been notified at the request. That notification has happened. You can see in that table when those notifications went to all of those utility services. TECO did respond and said they had no objection. Community Development has worked closely with Public Services to establish those access easements to those infrastructure that's owned by the city today. The Land Development Code also has two criteria identified for vacation. The first is whether the vacation would adversely affects adjacent, would adversely, had adverse effects to the adjacent neighboring properties, and the second is whether the subject, right-of-way, or easement is needed for any public purpose. In this case, the only public purpose is the access to those utilities, which would be established with the access easement. We reviewed the comprehensive plan and identified goal, policy, and objective which the application is consistent with. Like I said previously, the city will be removing the solar streetlight that's in, in the right-of-way. The existing catch basin, fire hydrant, and underwater lines will remain with that access easement. The city will still have access to those, that infrastructure. Private ownership and control of the property would help control and limit the criminal activity that we've seen that is happening in that area. The applicant has had communication with Broward Sheriff's Office and is here, and I'm sure can share with you some additional of those activities, some details of those activities herself. This application, because it is a vacation and it's an ordinance, does require two readings. So this is the first reading. And it was also before the Planning and Zoning Board, it was approved with a 3-1 vote. And at this point, based on staff's analysis, the Community Development Department is recommending approval, provided the requested access easements are executed and recorded in Broward County Public Records if it's approved.
Just to clarify, it says 4-1, not 3-1.
I'm sorry, 4-1. Yes, there was one objection. Yes. I'm available if you have questions, but I know the applicant is here as well, and I think there's a lot of public requests.
Yes, thank you, Corinne. This is a public hearing. Applicant Tammy James, would you like to come and speak? Please come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Attorney, City Manager. When we first approached this.
I'm sorry, Tammy, just say your name and address first.
I'm Tammy James. I live at 255 Northwest Tamara James Avenue. When we first approached this vacation of right-of-way, and the reason why we did it is because it's so much a crime that's going on in front of my house. We got a lot of homeless people that's coming through the, the entranceway in the back, and it's only getting worse. We got a lot of stolen cars. I've only seen one car that they set it on fire. Recently, I had someone in my front yard asleep, and they're getting closer to my front door. So my concerns is our safety and our security. So that's my whole purpose of trying to secure the area so me and my husband would be safe. So my request is that you guys approve. I mean, approve it, support us, help us for our safety. Yeah, I guess. This is what's happening in front of us. They're having a lot of sex right in front of my house. It's, it's pretty bad. I, my grandson, I tried to like to get him moved away from what's going on in front of the house. We have, I have videos of the lady that's sleeping in front of my yard. I don't want, I don't know how to, I don't want to screw it up. Oh, oh, you can see in my shoes. Okay. This is, this is someone right after them having sex right in front of my house, and then urinating in, in the bottle, and they throw it out with the condom. And it's, it's just a lot of strange cars right in front of us. And this is the lady right here Monday morning, sleeping in our yard, and they're getting really close now to us. And I'm just asking you guys for your support because this lady, I don't know what she's on, but she wasn't like violent at us. She wasn't violent, but we have other people that sit in front of us and can't say nothing to them because you don't know if they're gonna shoot at us. So it's starting to get like really, it's dangerous for us, so we're just asking you guys for your support. I wish you could hear me talking to her. But she was, she wasn't like really violent though, but she was on something. I don't know. But that's what's happening in front of our house. I just wanna say thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, Ms. James. Commissioner Ryan?
Ms. James, I have a question for you. So if this, if this passes, do you guys plan on fencing the property off?
Yes, I planned on putting a, you see where that little area is, where, it was a fence there. The hurricane tore it down like years ago, so the fence never went back up. But I plan on like putting a wall to continue over if it's passed, making a wall to connect and go over to the sidewalk and come down so we can secure the area.
Through the city, that's okay with our easements? That's possible? They'd go through the proper application process and permitting process? Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
I had a quick question, Ms. James. Safety is our number one priority here in the city of Dania Beach. I'm just wondering if you've had the opportunity to sit down with our BSO chief or city manager and create a plan for creating a safety in your neighborhood, only because I believe on tonight's agenda, our city's investing over $20 million in the safety of the city. So I'm just wondering if you've had an opportunity to speak with BSO and not just, you know, when, when you have an issue, but to really come up with some kind of plan for the safety of your neighborhood?
I haven't had the opportunity to sit down with them, but I would like to sit down with them. Anytime I'm away from my home, I tell them, you can back up in there and just sit there. You know, they can come to my house anytime they want. But if I get the opportunity to sit down with them, sure, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Up next, thank you, Ms. James. Anybody else? Okay. Next, we have Michelle Wilcox. If you could please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Michelle Wilcox. My address is 5201 Southwest 18th Street, Plantation, Florida. I am a member of St. Ruth Missionary Baptist Church. I am also the church clerk, and I'm also a member of the Church's Trustees Board. So as a member of the Church's Trustees Board, it is my fiduciary responsibility to address any assets or property that we have, to make sure that if we feel in any way that we may be not protecting the access that we have, it is my fiduciary responsibility to speak. So that is why I'm here. So since I'm not a member, I'm not a citizen of the city of Dania, I recognize that. I'm just making sure that you understand my position as to why I'm speaking. The reason why I'm also here is that I believe that we submitted a letter to the city requesting that you defer any action on this particular item. And the reason why we're asking for that deferment is because we were notified at the very last minute of the Planning and Zoning Meeting, and that is when they were requesting a letter, a notarized letter, as the application process require from us whether we objected or we approved. We did not have time to evaluate and research to make sure that we were able to get all the information. So we never turned in that letter. So that is not a part of the application. The deferment is also is because once we found out that it was approved, that we were looking and seeking for legal counsel. Unfortunately for us, the city of Dania has perfect counsel because the counsel that we were seeking already represents the city of Dania, two of them, in fact, that we tried to contact. And because it was a conflict of interest, they could not represent us. The only way they could is there was a waiver by the city attorney. Being diligent as she is, the city attorney would not approve any waiver. So that is not any indication against her or anything like that. She's just protecting the city, and I understand that. So we were finally able to get legal counsel. However, it is late in the game, so we're requesting that you actually defer this matter until we're able to actually assess how this particular item would jeopardize our property and the value of our property once we seek to actually develop it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox. Is that the extent of your comments there? So I guess that we could then come to, to the Commission to see if we would grant the request for the deferment due to the lack of time that they've had to prepare for this hearing, and they have gone through, I guess, the necessary steps with speaking with the attorneys and come up with roadblocks.
Yeah, we had two to actually contact her, and then we noticed. So when, there was two others we had, and we already knew that if there was a conflict, that we wouldn't even bother with them trying to address that. So, you know, so that was a process, trying to find those who were in that area and did not have a conflict with the city of Dania.
Okay. And did you speak with the James family with regards to?
So that was the other thing for the letter that you were talking about. That was one of the proposals that they, the attorney is asking as to what type of agreement that we may be able to come to. If we were unable to come to an agreement, then we would probably be able to oppose it. Because one of the things that they did mention was the fire hydrant that's there. That is the closest fire hydrant to our property. So if there is an issue, because the next one is all the way on, you're looking at 12th Avenue, a block, 8th and 8th Avenue, a block and a half away from the 9th Avenue. So for us, that will pose a safety issue. Once we, and we have been in talks with developing the property. In fact, we have a developer that actually developed landmark, that developed one here, that have approached us about doing affordable and workforce housing. And there's also surplus land right next to Collins that we have already approached the city, the school board of Broward County, that we can access that property also to increase our land. So we may in the future have other options as for ingress and egress. Right now, we, we don't want to limit our ability to maximize any ability to develop the land that will be the greatest, that will give us the greatest value and the greatest amount of development that's there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilcox. At this time, I guess, I would wanna see if there is any interest from the Commission to support the request for deferment until the, what would it be, the 14th or?
Yeah, we did ask for at least a two-week deferment on, on this particular item.
Okay.
That, the next is October the 14th.
The next Commission meeting is October 14th. I hear this gentleman is saying the second meeting, that's the 28th.
So I guess the request would be whether or not you want to defer it for at least 30 days.
Okay. So do I have discussion from the Commission on this or a motion? Thank you, Ms. Wilcox. Commissioner Remoli?
Thank you, Mayor. So the question is then, if we defer it, we defer the first reading to the next Commission meeting? Is that the request?
Two weeks. With 30 days.
Okay, so we defer the first reading though. We, so we won't fail on first reading, what you're saying? Okay, okay.
There are a couple of things you could do, and I just want to be clarified. You could say no. You could say yes and defer first reading to the 14th, and then the second reading would be on the 28th. So you would have, you could fail on first reading, don't get me wrong, but you could have it on first reading and sec, or second reading. Or you can defer this reading to the 28th. I don't know what you're looking to do.
Well, everybody's kinda crickets on this one, but I, I will kinda weigh in to a degree because I, I do understand from what I've heard. I've done some due diligence. I've, I've spoken to Ms. James. I've seen the property. I have spoken to members of St. Ruth and some of the trustees here, and as I stated, safety is our top priority. That's what we invest in, and that's why we're investing another. I believe that will pass, hopefully it'll pass another $20 million into our BSO and safety. So I want, you know, Ms. James to feel safe in her home. She has a right to feel safe in her home. I'm just wondering if in the meantime, that we could, she has not had the opportunity to work with BSO, has not had an. to work with BSO, has not had an opportunity to say, what else can we do in the meantime? At least for these 30 days? And then give St. Ruth the opportunity to do their due diligence and have the proper preparation time that they would need on their end. So in this way, we could have the safety issue addressed while St. Ruth has their, has the time that they need to do the proper preparation. So that would be my suggestion. And if anyone else wants to weigh in on that or have something else, I'd like to hear it. Commissioner Llewellyn.
I was actually thinking the same thing. It would, if we defer to the next meeting, the first reading to the next meeting, and then the second reading to the last meeting of the month, that would essentially give, I think, everybody the opportunity, give Ms. James the opportunity to sit down with BSO, make a plan. Because it sounds like, although maybe they're calling BSO for certain, for some things, but there might be something more that can be done. Because in the meantime, even so, you still have to get to a second reading anyway. And so there would still be issues going on between now and then. So I think it would be beneficial for you to sit down with them and maybe see if there are things that can be done in the meantime to try to address those concerns. Make sure that everybody's safe, make sure the rest of your neighbors are safe as well. And then at that time, it'll also give the church an opportunity to either retain counsel or to, you know, maybe sit down and have a conversation with you as well and see if there are things that can be worked out. We could come back in two weeks and the church could come back and say, all's well, and we're good, and there's no objection. I just, I think we, it would only be fair to give, it's a reasonable request. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I think it can benefit everybody in the long run. And just try to make sure that everybody tries to work this out together. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. This is still a public hearing, so do we have any further comment? I mean, I do have these citizens' comments, but I do see Vice Mayor.
Thank you. How long's that property been vacant?
So just like the area in Burr Point, the city economic development and that property, most of all that property was donated to the city and to us. Property had been vacant for close to 40 years. However, during that time, we have had, we have spent extensive amount of funds on it, whereby we have replatted, went and spent the funds to have it platted. We have come to the city and had it rezoned. There was a plan to actually build a sanctuary there. However, that was about five, 10 years ago, so that plan went away. However, we also have already entertained, and actually, at one point in time, this was right before COVID, where we publicly went out for requests to develop the land for public, for housing. So because of COVID, that kind of went away. So now we're back, you know, I think we're back full speed, unfortunately, you know, hood and financing. But I'm pretty sure we can probably work through that. And also working with the school board of Broward County, where we have had a conversation with their facility and planning department, where the school board is looking to partner with entities that are looking to work with them for workforce housing. And there is like another entrance, if you go down 9th Avenue, that goes into a little surplus area for that piece of property for the school board of Broward County. But like I said, these are all talks. So how we develop, where we develop, what we do. We, you know, we did have a conversation, they did say, you know, we kind of would be diminishing the value of our property by limiting an ingress. So we just don't want to be placed in a position where we just, we're just, we're gonna lose probably an opportunity. We may not, but we don't know, but we are seeking to make sure that that value is not lost.
Okay, I think the only issue I have is that it's been vacant so long, and then because the applicant come in and now wants to do something, then there's a...
We have documentation of our efforts to have it developed.
Okay, so...
So, and not only that, I just want to also say that we believe, as the trustees in the church, believe that we have been good neighbors and good partners. If you look at the pictures, you will see a very overgrown tree. And whenever that has been an issue for them, we have sustained financially on our own to make sure that that is not on their property, even though it's still on our property, it may overhang. So, and we are in the process of moving forward in our next year budget to actually go head-on, and it's not, it's not a native, it's not a native tree. You know, to probably get approval to cut it down, because that's what we want to do. So if there is an issue, if there is some kind of way that we can probably come to an agreement, or if there's something that we can do, because we didn't know what was going on. So if there's something that we could do to help eliminate or to diminish their concern that it involves our property, we're willing to sit down and have that conversation. Because whenever an issue has come to our attention, we have addressed it. So I just want to let you know that if there is something that we can come to an agreement with, we're more than happy to come to that table.
I understand your concerns. You know, I've been up here a lot, so, you know, I see different ways of things being done. You start talking about the egress to your property would decrease the value of it, and then I see the size of the property. And if they were to put housing development in there, there's many, many places that have one or two or three on the, on your east side and your north side that would be able to circle around the whole thing. Your concern as far as the fire hydrant goes, obviously, if there is a project going on there, the developer would be responsible for putting fire hydrants multiple places in there, so...
So that means that you were gonna end up having an additional financial responsibility because we might be limited in the fire hydrant.
One fire hydrant's not gonna cover the whole project, ma'am, you have to be reasonable.
It's a long property.
I mean, if we're gonna talk about this and debate it, let's be reasonable, okay? Because I don't want to be, I don't want to be buffaloed that the one fire hydrant's gonna be the problem, okay?
I just believe we can come to the agreement.
I'm trying to recognize the situation and trying to understand both ends of the argument and come to a conclusion that's satisfactory for both. Because, you know, there's a lot of people from St. Ruth that I like, and I like the situation. I also understand Ms. James' concern too. I, you know, if we were to postpone it for 30 days, let's say, for instance, and you came back and your argument wasn't sufficient, and then the board voted for it on the second reading, are you gonna start, continue to fight for it? See, so we're procrastinating, so there's two alternatives that I have in my mind. Would be either to pass it or not pass it tonight and give it 30 days for you and put the second reading on the 28th of the month. That gives you a month to put your argument together, and it can either be rejected on the second reading, and that way we don't put it off. Or if we have it on the second, if we have the first reading on the 28th, if we pass it, you're gonna come back two weeks later and still argue the problem. Then we're just putting stuff off. That's my point. You know, I just don't want to keep dragging this out, that's all.
Yes, I do.
So I guess it's up to the board. Either way, you know, I just, you know, I have some objections to all of a sudden it being done. I still don't believe the development of that, if they bring it. You know, your church may have the money to do this, and I don't think she's gonna have the money to fight it. So it's gonna have to be a discretion that we're gonna have to make, and it's gonna be tough for us to do that when you're gonna have to come back to us with all the, you know, some kind of layout why you need that egress. You see what I'm saying? You just can't say it's gonna decrease the value. You're gonna have to come back and say, it needs to be here because we have all these buildings going up here, and this is what's gonna happen. And I don't think you're gonna be doing that. Okay, so I think there's gonna be a lot of controversy about that being an egress. And I think your fire hydrant issue is not an issue. So, I mean, I'm just trying to be open-minded to everybody's question on it and be fair to everybody in there that's there. I wish there was a way that if you did develop the property, and it did become a problem, that, you know, maybe they're willing to at that time figure a different way out to ha, if it does come to a point that that'd be, you know, opened up again and with a positivity for the project itself. I don't know if there's a way to do that either, because I wouldn't want to shut the project down because that road not being there either. So I don't know how that works. I don't have an answer for that. Okay, I think I got my point across both ways.
Yes, you said it. Thank you.
Okay. We still have public comments. Is everybody who's still submitted a form wanted, would like to speak? So then we will continue with the public hearing. Ms. Angeline Flowers.
Good evening. My name is Angeline Flowers. My address is 6193 Osprey Terrace, Coconut Creek, Florida. I am too a member of St. Ruth Missionary Baptist Church. I am a trustee member. As my fellow trustee has stated, we do request for continuation with the consideration what has been said above. One thing that I would just want to add to what she's already said is that criminal activity is not just subject to that area. So as we're considering things, what are some other things? There was an opportunity where the church, some of the deacons and the trustees have met, and we weren't able to come to a mutual understanding. So by allowing us to have this request to be granted this evening does give us a time to kind of get ourselves together, take it back to the church so that we can be a more collective organization coming before you. And in addition to what she said, why the property has not been developed, we've been through five different pastors, and we are governed by pastors, by leadership. So fortunately, right now, we do have our standing pastor that's here with us, and we're ready to move forward post-COVID. But these are just some other things as you guys take into consideration our requests on allowing us this continuance so that the church can better come before you as an organization for this request. Because I don't want the church to be robbed of an opportunity that will cause a financial hardship. Because when we're talking about egress, is if we develop anything, it'd just be one way in and one way out now off of Northwest 9th Avenue. So with these things considered respectfully, thank you for hearing my thoughts. I just wanted us to get the fair opportunity for us to collect ourselves and be able to come back to the board. Thank you.
Ms. Flowers, so you're just saying really quickly that the members have not been involved in this at this time, just the trustees, and so they have, you have not had an opportunity to discuss with the members? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Ms. Benita Clark McKnight, would you please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Benita McKnight. My address is 1360 Northwest 2nd Terrace, Dania Beach. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, how y'all doing? I'm sick, but I'm here. I just want to say, I lived in next street over from Tammy. Been back there 25 years. And a lot of these people here, I never even seen a ride by there. I'm just being honest. And as far as police presence, I have spoken to the top of the top. Our area is pretty quiet, so we don't get police presence back there unless we call. But what everybody gotta understand, we gotta live back there. So in fairness to us, I just don't understand because you got another entrance on 9th. And even if it don't get granted, who want all that traffic back there? We got kids back there. I got 13 back there, grandkids. Like, I'm just, I'm serious. I just think we could work together and come up with a solution. That's how I feel. And what's happening is you got 12th Avenue, then you got a brick wall. So what the people are doing, the action is happening on Tammy Street, and they jumped the gate, they done got away from the police, they on a whole nother side. So if y'all come back there and look, you'll see Tammy at the corner. You got the houses right here, the whole brick wall, and then you got my side. So that's how a lot of these people getting away. They parking the cars on the other side of the lake, and they gone. That's what's happening. But honestly, I've been back there 25 years, and I never even seen nobody back there looking at it. Honestly. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. For the record, I did take a ride along with our community development director. And Ms. James, when I was over there just to see it, I want people to know that I wanted to see this property in person. So we will move on to Mr. Albert C. Jones. No, sir?
No speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Then we will bring up Mr. Ricky Young. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Deputy Clerk and City Attorney. My name is Ricky Young. That's R.I.C.K.I.E. My address is 225 Northwest 7th Avenue in the beautiful city of Dania Beach. I'm one of those guys that have Matthew 25 in me. I don't just pontificate, I come with action. Because actions speak louder than words. So far, I was there when the lady was just waking up in front of Sister James' house. She was don't know where she was at. And that is not only a safety hazard, but a health hazard. You don't know what type of drugs, you don't know what type of people that was looking for her. Just in that little area, it's a dead-end street. No road goes through to nowhere. So if I were living there, I would want to put a wall there to try to combat the illegal and illicit activities that's in front of my residence. And I can concur, if any one of y'all was in that same position, y'all would not want people sleeping in your yard, cars in your yard, and all the kind of unnecessary action going on in front of your house. But if you live somewhere else, that's fine. So we can get up here and talk a lot of trash all we wanna. But let's get down to the nuts and bolts. Safety is the utmost importance of anybody life. So when you say that you need that little small area which the fire department can't get through, for whatever reason, so when you begin to develop everything, you're gonna have to put more fire hydrant. So I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna sit down. You have your property line. They have their property line. Stay in your property line and leave it as it is. And look for other avenues to find another entrance. You got the senior citizen home, you got Collins. Why don't you ask the people with their parking ride to open up their area? Or the auto parts place that used to be there to open up their area to come through? Anytime you feel like it. You can't do that, because you infringe it on a residential property rights. And if you say you love the Lord and you continue with this foolishness, God help you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Up next, we will have Tammy Ingram. Ms. Ingram, if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tammy Ingram. I reside at 221 Northwest 4th Avenue in beautiful city of Dania Beach. I'm just here to support the James residence, I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry. So I am in support or of vacationing right away due to the safety of Mr. and Mrs. James' well-being, home, and their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Up next, we have Ms. Daphne Henry. If you would please come up and state your name and address? Okay, there's somebody else. Pastor Michael Anderson, if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Pastor Michael Anderson, New Jerusalem Baptist Church, 2254 Douglas Street, Hollywood, Florida. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. I agree with Pastor R.I.C.K.I.E. I don't blame him for getting the name right. them for getting the name right. This is a difficult thing for me. This is a difficult thing for me because I love the people in this room. And I know that no matter what I'm going to say, they've stuck their sword in the sand and feel like they won't be moved. That's unfortunate. That's absolutely unfortunate. What Vice Mayor put forth, thank you for the math, because that's what I come to do. The math is this. If I were an architect, we have opportunity, once development began, everything we're thinking about is going to be worked out. We're talking about two, just as the mayor did, I looked at the property and looked at both with all the love I have. The math is, there's, there's, right now, two opportunities for my family of St. Ruth to access the property. Once development begins, if I'm the architect, you can move. That two can become three. You're working out those options. However... I don't be interrupting people's phone calls, just that.
Please silence your phones.
But the further math is this, and this is what breaks my heart. We have opportunities, acreage, opportunity for development and housing. And once end, revenue is going to be flowing. And on that acreage, we're sticking our sword in the sand for 70 times 100 feet. 70 times 100 feet. That makes absolutely no sense to me. So anybody who know me, I'm going to go take my seat. But I want to bring that home. That entire property, if I was the pastor, that entire property that I have, for 70 times 100 feet, there's absolutely no way that would be an issue for people who know God.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson. If, Ms. Henry, Ms. Daphne Henry, did you get back? Okay. Yes, this is the last speaker. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Put the microphone down a little bit for you. There you go.
Good evening. Daphne Henry, 1201 Northwest 2nd Street, Dania Beach, Florida. Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, Deputy City Clerk. I am alone with the James because I live on a corner of 12th, 12th Avenue. It is a lot of traffic at times, and you have people that's walking around. They're in the area that don't belong. And, you know, safety is the first priority. You know, feel comfortable in your home. And for as them develop their peace there to, you know, direct the traffic, because, you know, we have kids and grandkids running around, so we don't need extra traffic running through our neighborhood. So that's why I want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daphne. I believe that is the last of the public comment. Do I have anybody else from the public who has not submitted an item, submitted a form and would like to speak? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask if you can even do this, but, you know, first I'd like to make a motion. We pass 12.1. If we can have the second reading in 30 days instead of, instead of two weeks.
The only thing I ask is we pick the date because of the advertising requirement.
October 28th, maybe.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So with that being said, you know, I'm a couple more things to say. You know, the thing that I keep going through my mind, and I've seen so much development in our city and watching how it gets done, and seen so many different layouts and stuff, I feel that that probably can easily be developed without worrying about what, putting that wall up that she wants to block in. You know, appointments just brought up too. You know, Max, millions of parts just sold out, and they're going to end up developing that property. When that property gets developed, there's roads that are going to have to be put in behind that because they're going to have to have access from the backside of that as well. Because if not, then they've got one access to get in and wrap around. I don't think that, you know, the complaint is strong enough, in my opinion, to, you know, carry, if I can pass the motion and have it tonight, if we do pass it and get to the 28th reading, that gives them a month to put their defense together. And it could be changed back if they can provide, you know, a probable cause to not have us do it. But, you know, I just can't see it from the arguments tonight that there's enough argument that would stop me from wanting to see a resident try to protect herself and still have the church still be able to develop the property. And when the church come up to develop the property, I'm sure that if this commission is up here, we're going to be in support of it. And I think that they can design it as well. I don't, I just don't see any other way. So with that, I'm asking that we pass 12.1 with the second reading on the October 28th to give them time to put their thing together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Ramone.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I would like to echo Vice Mayor's comments and also second his motion. Here, if we're done discussing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I will, so I will just give my final comments on this, and then we can take it to vote. At the end of the day, I'm just going to kind of reiterate, the request here from St. Ruth's is just for a continuance. And I do understand the Vice Mayor's reasoning and rationale for being able to do it that way. However, I do feel in the conversations that I've had and what I've heard, that this feels rushed, this decision feels rushed, that they were put in a position to have to hurry up and gather things together. And I know how when you feel rushed to do something, you don't feel like you've had an opportunity to do what you've wanted to be able to do. I still believe that, you know, we can work with our BSO and work with our city team to make that neighborhood feel safe and come up with a plan, a long-term plan to secure and make that neighborhood safe in the meantime. But at the end of the day, we are all neighbors. This is love your neighbor as yourself. And so I wouldn't want this to be, you know, something that just completely divides this community. At the end of the day, we should be able to come together to have compromise. And the compromise, as I see it, is just them asking for a little bit more time, and then maybe in the meantime, we can work something out. But at the end, I didn't want this to come to the commission because I wanted to be able to see and hope that, you know, you guys have known, St. Ruth is 117 years old. The James family has been here for so many years and decades. And so you all, I know, have grown up with each other and know each other from children, from childhood. That's what I learned in doing my due diligence. So for childhood friends, people who have gone to school together to have this division over property, that is heartbreaking. And you don't want to come to that kind of end. So I would just hope that we could compromise on that. We do have a first, we do have a second. And with that, we can go ahead and take it to a vote. Okay, Vice Mayor has... Well, I do. I think we all want to be fair. And so Vice Mayor said if we wanted to pull it, and if you guys would be willing to compromise on that, then he would, he would be willing to pull that back. So I would just let Vice Mayor and Commissioner Llewellyn weigh in on that.
I understood what you were saying. And I, and that, and I agree with the mayor in the sense that I feel like either way, it's, this potentially comes back in basically a month. I just, I feel like from listening, and I have had some conversations with people at the church as well, and I have heard their plight on this as well. And I do, I understand that some of these conversations that have taken place have been very, very recent. And I, I understand that. And I know that they, you have to, you have to speak, you have to discuss it with your board. You may want to discuss it with your congregation. There are people that need to be more involved in this, and that takes time. And so therefore, I would prefer to give them the two weeks to come back for the first reading so that they could do some of these things. And again, potentially resolve the issue so that they don't have to come back and object at all. So as opposed to going forward with a first reading vote, and then just coming back a month later, or whatever it is for the second reading. So I will make a motion to continue the first reading to the 14th.
Just to be clear, is the first? Hold on.
Because that's what, that's what, that's what he was saying.
He was just saying that he was going to pull it. So let the city attorney weigh in because we get a little...
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, did you withdraw your motion?
Hold on. Vice Mayor?
I'm just, what I'm trying to say is if you, you, apparently we see what you're asking for the thing, for the continuance. I'm not in favor of the continuance. So, but I'm offering you the opportunity to do that first if they don't want it. Then we're going to bring it back, the original 12.1, and I'm going to ask that pass 12.1. I'm just giving the commission the opportunity to say that I'm not being so hard about it, saying that, let's go right for it. If you can convince those two down there, then it's okay. If not, I'm ready to pass 12.1. So you could ask for the continuance first. If we deny it, then we go to 12.1, and that's the one I'd like to pass.
Okay, so for right now, you're withdrawing your motion right now so that a different motion can be made. So there's no longer a motion on the table.
Okay.
Except the one I just made.
So there's now a new motion on the table to postpone first reading to October 14.
Correct.
Made by Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes.
Is there a second? You can second.
I'll second. All right, so then I guess we'll go to a vote. City Clerk? Hold on.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramone?
No.
Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
No.
Mayor Davis?
No, I mean... I got into the rhythm of it. No, yes.
So the motion fails.
Motion fails. Vice Mayor, now you can make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We pass 12.1 with the second reading on October the 28th, which gives them 30 days to put their case together.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ryan?
You want to second it? I'd like to second it. And I'll make some remarks on this, on this item, too. Yeah, what we're dealing with here is, let's not get away from, you know, the subject here. This is a vacation right of way. That's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with safety issues, and we're not dealing with future development issues. This is vacation right of way from the city to the applicant. The applicant has passed all of their, their proper due diligence. It looks like they passed, what is it? Section 655 Land Development Codes. They met all the requirements. They made, they provided all the necessary documentation. When I looked at the property, you know, obviously I've been by there also, and when you look at a map of the overall property, you know, the overall neighborhood, this is a very, very unique property to even do this vacation right of way. The only, the only neighbor that I would see that would have a problem with this would be the Dania Development, which is to the east of them. And they signed off on it and said that they don't have a problem with the vacation right of way. I would say that would be one of the neighbors that would have the most say in that property. So like I said, we, we have to turn this over to the experts, and the experts approved of it. Our P and Z board approved of it. They passed all this legally, and it makes a lot of sense. If you ask me, I think it makes a lot of sense. So that's why I second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. We have a first and a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Hold on.
No. Commissioner Ramone?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Pass is 3-2.
Thank you. If I could just have one moment. 11.1, the way it was phrased by Commissioner
Llewellyn, it coincides with 12, the second reading of 12.1. So both will be heard on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, City Attorney. And we will move forward with the next item, which is item 13, no, 12.2. 12.2. Eve, if you could please read item 12.2.
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Commission approving amendments to the Dania Point Design Development Guidelines as to commercial square footage, number of hotel units, additional residential units, and other modifications to the guidelines, submitted by Dania Live 1748 LLC, Dania Live 1748 II LLC, Spirit Airlines Inc. and Discount Auto Parts LLC for the property located north of Sterling Road, east of Interstate 95, and west of Bryan Road within the city of Dania Beach. Provided for conflicts, codification, and effective date, this is a community development item. It is first reading and subject to a public hearing.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. If we could just have everybody exit quietly, please, as we move forward with the meeting. We appreciate it. Thank you. Corinne.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Morning. Good, I'm sorry, not morning, good evening. Sorry.
I'm right there, I'm right there with you, Corinne. I'm right there with you.
Sorry. All right, Corinne LeJoy, Deputy Director, Community Development. This application is a rezoning of request, first reading to amend the development design guidelines for Dania Point. The project itself is zoned PMUD. It's within the Regional Activity Center. We know the location to be north of Sterling Road between I-95 and Bryan Road. The acreage of the site is 102, a little bit over 102 acres. And the existing use is mixed use, commercial and residential uses. This is the location of the property. I'm sure we're all familiar with it. The request itself is for the, the development design guidelines are required for the zoning district, the PMUD. It is intended to regulate the development within this district, similar to the way the Land Development Code provides development design guidelines throughout the rest of the city. And the request tonight is to amend that, the Dania Point DDG. There's a history of the approvals that happened on this project. We began working on this project in probably 2014 and 15. So we've been working on this project a lot. It was phased. It's gone through site plans and plaits and modifications. The rezoning tonight further, furthers the comprehensive plan. We've identified elements in the future land use element, housing and neighborhood element, as well as transportation element. Community outreach did occur. We asked the applicant to do that, community outreach. It was conducted via Zoom. There were six participants, and no objections were raised at that time. The, sorry, okay. The proposed development design guidelines complies with the city's land development regulations regarding the process for the zoning district. In September last week, the Planning and Zoning Board heard this item and recommended four-to-one approval of the request. And staff is in support of the applicant's request and the recommend, approval of the development design guidelines. I know the applicant and their representative is present and has a presentation to make to the commission as well. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Corinne.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak for or against this item? Come on up, Mr. Mealy.
Good evening, Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale. On behalf of the applicant, we have a few slides to show. I know you know the boundary of the property. So what we're doing here... So what we're doing here, we're not changing the zoning district. We're not adding any property to the zoning district, but we're changing the regulations that govern the zoning district, so it's treated like a rezoning. So what we're doing is we're reducing the amount of commercial square footage. We're increasing the number of hotel rooms. And we're not adding any residential units, but what we are doing is changing from high-rise to mid-rise. So mid-rise is between four stories and eight. High-rise is nine stories or above. So we're eliminating the high-rise and sticking with the mid-rise. So any residential buildings built in the future would not be as tall as the high-rise would be. We're also adding bike-share locations and ride-share pickup locations, and I'll show those. The other thing we're doing is every block in Dania Point has a list of the types of uses that are allowed. So something might say commercial and office, something might say commercial, office, and residential. And so you notice Block 5, Roman numeral 5, the one that's highlighted in orange, we're adding residential as a permitted use in that block. We're not increasing the number of residential units. We're just saying, here's another location where it can go within the property. And again, it would only be mid-rise, not high-rise. These are showing you the additional park and ride and bike share. This one is the bike-share location. This is part of the city's bike-share program. We have locations here where you can pick up or drop off a bike, and we're adding those as shown here. Also adding additional ride-share locations within the property, that's shown here. And other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mealy. Is there any other person from the public that wishes to speak for or against this item? All right, then I will close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Make the motion pass 12.2.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Llewellyn? Do I have any discussion from the commission? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is for the applicant. This is a question about the traffic study. The traffic study was done in 2016, correct? And then, and then it was, it was re-analyzed by our city staff and by your expert, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When it comes to that study, I know that you guys had a projection for where the traffic was gonna go all the way up, you know, even past, right, to 2030, 2035, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So how do you know that you're on par with that traffic projection, right, where we are, where we stand now at 2025?
So what we do is we look at the growth between 2016 and now, and then they also predict growth going forward. In fact, I think when we did the land use, well, when we did the zoning, I think we went farther even than the 2030, because the county computer model does that as well. At this point, really what we're doing is we're looking at the trip generation with the various uses. So as we reduce the commercial, that takes a certain number of trips off. Again, this is all for the future, right? Because everything that's there is obviously already generating traffic. But we would reduce the commercial, we reduce the certain amount of traffic associated with it. When we add the hotel, we come back and add some back in. But when you, when you look at all the adding and subtracting, the future projection is actually that it's gonna be a little bit less traffic than it would have been had we left the plan the way it was before.
Okay.
With more commercial, less hotel.
And that took into account the new buildings that were built on Bryan Road that aren't a part of Dania Point?
Yes, we, whenever we look at traffic, everything that's already there is accounted for. Everything that's approved but not built yet is accounted for. And everything that's under construction but not finished yet is accounted for.
Okay, thank you for that. And from my understanding, you guys have a threshold in order to put a traffic light on Old Griffin Road? And you already have a contingency funds assigned towards putting in that traffic light on Old Griffin Road, correct?
As part of our plat and our other approvals, there are a number of road improvements, especially traffic lights, that they can make us pay for and bond for, but only if the county says it meets the warrants to warrant a traffic light. But if they say it does, we're on the hook.
So how do we know if it meets the warrants? You have to bring it before the county?
No, what we, the way the county does this is they have up until two years after the last certificate of occupancy, right? So the whole project's billed out, then you add an additional two years. At any point in that time, they can call for the traffic warrant study to be done, or they can even do it themselves. And if it's warranted, then our money is already there through a letter of credit as part of our plat.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the point I was trying to get to. I would like to see, you know, with this approval, I would like to see that traffic light on Old Griffin Road. Because regardless, more, there's gonna be more traffic, more people are gonna move into Dania Point, regardless. So right now, as we can see, as locals and, you know, visitors as well, that it is getting pretty, pretty jammed up, a little dangerous over on Old Griffin Road. So I would approve this, you know, with knowing that we definitely have a future of getting that traffic light in here sooner than, sooner than later. And, you know, we could take, and Dania Point could take, and the city could help you take whatever steps necessary in order to accomplish that.
So what I was gonna suggest is if your city engineer would reach out to the Broward County Traffic Engineering Division to let them know that you're interested in this, you're interested in when the warrants might be there to do it, and, and obviously, we would join with you in that effort. But if they hear from their city engineer, it might get them going a little faster.
Excellent. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We have a first, we have a second, we have our comment, so... All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, item 12.2 passes unanimously. Item 13, second reading ordinances, there are none. Item 14, discussion and possible action. We have item 14.1. Eve, if you would please read item 14.1.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission pursuant to section 811-140 of the LDC approves the acceptance of a donation by the Dania Beach Improvement Committee, Inc., a Florida nonprofit, which donation is to pay for half the cost of the proposed mural. Further, the City Commission waives competitive procurement of the mural, approves the mural design, which is dedicated to honoring veterans, to be located at the city's proposed Veteran Park at 100 West Dania Beach Boulevard in Dania Beach. Provided for conflicts and effective date. This is the community development item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. I want to first say my condolences to Mrs. McCombs and her husband. We've been working with her in the Public Art Board for the past few months, so... So this is a request for a Veterans' Park mural. And let me show you where the location is. This is the south wall of City Hall. We've recently designated this area as Veterans' Park. When the City Place Development Project was developed, part of their ask was to provide funding to make the existing parking lot that was there into the much-needed green space at the City Hall complex. So that's the process of how we're making it into Veterans' Park. And this will further enhance that park's beautification. This is an image of that wall currently. It's a large, blank, white wall, which we love to put murals on, large, blank walls. And this is the proposed mural image. The Dania Beach Improvement Committee and the Public Art Advisory Board have been partnering together, and they want to create a mural to recognize and honor all of the U.S. Armed Forces. So this mural would consist of the art of the American flag along the mural, and the artist would be Skylar Nader. The size of the mural is 14 feet tall by 55 feet wide. It also includes some plaques that would be carved out of some type of material that looks like wood, but it's more durable than wood, and would be painted to represent all of the Armed Forces, as you can see there. The funding allocation, the cost for this mural and the service plaques are $14,468. That's $8,900 for the actual art of the mural, and $5,568 for the plaques, for the fabrication and the installation. The Dania Improvement Committee is providing $8,468 towards this mural. And the request is for the city to contribute $6,000 from the Public Art Fund. And the city will be pressure cleaning the wall and providing a lift for the mural to install the art. I just spoke to Mrs. McCombs, and she said they were hoping to get started October 13th and probably finish before Veterans' Day, and hopefully have some type of celebratory ribbon-cutting ceremony at that time. So staff is recommending approval of the agreement with the artist and the mural installation. Here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Eleanor. I just want to say thank you to you for your presentation. And Mrs. McCombs, this isn't the first. She's been to the Public Art Board meeting, I think, about three or four times. She's very diligent in, on the Dania Beach Improvement Committee. And so we want to thank her for her efforts. We went through a lot of different renderings, and I think there was a lot of thought and care that went into creating this. Even the medallions that are gonna go on there are very high-quality. This is gonna be a beautiful, another gorgeous mural right here on City Hall. So I want to thank the Art Board, thank Eleanor and Corinne, and thank Miss McCombs and the, and the Dania Beach Improvement Committee for beautifying and bringing this forward. It really means a lot for our city. So I want to see if there's any other discussion, or do I have a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. Do I have a motion? Yes.
I was, thank you so much. I was speaking to Mrs. McCombs. She did have a concern that the artist brought to her attention regarding the insurance. It's not an extraordinary amount, but we don't, we don't really want anything to preclude it moving forward. And I do have some money in my contingency, but I just wanted, for transparency purposes, to clear Janet's worries that we can move forward should that, that insurance component on, with the artist be, be an issue.
Thank you, City Manager, always, for your generous contribution as well. I need a motion and a second, and then any discussion from the commission, Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Motion to pass item 14.1?
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second from Commissioner Romoli. Do I have any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye. All right, item 14.1 passes unanimously. Thank you and congratulations to the Dania Beach Improvement Committee. Next, we have item 14.2, Broward County Urban Wilderness Park System. And this is a parks and recreation.
Very, yeah, very quickly. Dania Cove Park already has an archaeological site designation on the property. There is a grant going forward that the city has for a tot lot at the park, and that is also going forward. What Broward County is asking for, there is a committee of Broward County, the Urban Wilderness Committee, and they are looking to designate this cove as urban wilderness. And if the city agrees and it goes through the process, this land would be in perpetuity to be used as urban wilderness. So it would not, could never be developed for a commercial purpose or for any other purpose. It could remain a park, but it just couldn't be developed into a playing field, for example. And there's a hearing on this on October 15th. I don't know the location yet. They haven't designated the location date. But as it is affecting city property, I would thought prudent to bring it to your attention and make sure we are in support of this application by the Recreational Environmental Management Group.
And if I may, Mayor, we'd like to add that the Parks and Recreation Department is in support of it as well. We have active and passive parks. This park will always be a passive park and will not affect our further application as well for next year.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent point, City Manager. All right, do I have a motion from the commission? Commissioner Llewellyn?
It's my favorite park, so I'm saying motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Romoli. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, Commission. Item 14.2 passes unanimously. Next, we have item 14.3, the Dolphins Cancer Challenge on February the 28th, 2026, sponsored by Commissioner Romoli.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, cancer has touched me significantly on the last two years, and I know that cancer has significantly touched pretty much everybody in this room, one way or another. Our good friend and good partner in everything, very community-driven. He's a great partner in the city. Arnoldo Suarez, who was the general manager of the Dania Beach Casino, also had a bout of cancer and luckily has survived it to this point. And I'm asking for each of us to donate $100 out of our contingency for a total of $500 to support his cause and be part of the Dolphin Cancer Challenge next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Romoli. I'm happy to support that effort. Do we have, the city manager's in her generosity mood tonight. She wants the city another $100 from, so, let's see, hold on. The city manager wants to contribute $100 from her contingency. I have agreed to do so as well. Everybody from the commission agreed to support $100. So you have $600 for your contribution. Thank you, Commissioner Romoli.
Thank you all very much.
Mayor, when you go on on the next item, which is the Vice Mayor's, he's asked to have it continued to October 28th meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney, and thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, we have item 15.1, Advisory Board Appointments, City Clerk.
And just to be clear, you didn't need a motion, it was his item. So it's just, it's just going on to the next, the 28th.
Okay. Need a motion, Vice Mayor? Motion to continue to...
Oh, make a motion and continue, item 14.4.
To October 28th.
The 28th of October, yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye. All right, item 14.3 is continued until October 28th. All right, so now we will move on to, I was, item 14.4 is continued to October 28th. Item 15.1, City Clerk Advisory Board Appointments.
Yes, Vice Mayor Salvino has one appointment to make for the Green Advisory Board.
Hold on, sir. You have to be, hold on.
Hello there. Oh, there you are. I didn't know, I had an appointment. And I think maybe the reason I didn't, you know, wise guy here, is I requested of, about two months ago to have reports brought us, to us, to show who's showing up at the advisory boards and who's not. And I don't believe the commission has received those at all yet.
Yes, we've had a couple. We just had Laura Lombardo from the...
No, we, no, 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 you're missing what I'm saying.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I asked for an absentee...
That was provided at the last...
Where's mine?
At the last meeting, the City Clerk said.
Okay.
We'll make sure you get it.
Can we have one on written form, not sent by email? Because sometimes we might miss an email. And have it, put, like, you used to have it on the thing out here, and we used to, like, review it and talk about it a little bit.
I'll print a new one.
Okay. For next week, next meeting for us, please? Okay, I don't have anybody at this time to appoint.
Okay. We also have a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Board for an alternate member, and that's a commission as a whole appointment.
So we can think about that and bring that back? That's all new information for us, unless we have somebody already? Commissioner Romoli?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually was going to respond to our fabulous Vice Mayor. That was actually, I gave you the name for that appointment to the Green Advisory, which is why you probably didn't know you had one. And she moved out of state, so she is not able to continue her term. So that's why we have the vacancy now. You're welcome.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, as far as the Planning and Zoning appointment, which is for the commission, there were some resumes that were sent around to all of us. I, I did like the gentleman who was the attorney. It was like the first one out of the group, because he also does work with an attorney that, that does this type of, this type of work, does a lot of the planning and zoning type of work. But I did check to see if we thought it might be a conflict, and I was told that it likely would not ever be a conflict.
That was Jeremy Rosner?
Yes. Uh, yes, yes. But I think he'd be a good addition to the, to the Planning and Zoning, since he does have experience in the field of planning and zoning.
All right, so is that your official recommendation?
That's my recommendation, and if anybody wants to second that, then I'll, I'll make a motion to approve him.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Llewellyn to approve Jeremy Rosner to the Planning and Zoning Board. Do I have a second?
You do, second.
All right, Commissioner Ramoli, we have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. All right, our Planning and Zoning Board vacancy is filled. Thank you, Commission. Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Next, we have Commission Comments, item 16, and we will start with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you. Very brief tonight, because, because we were just here last week. Realistically, that's the main reason. But I want to congratulate all of us on passing our budget. I think despite some of the controversy that took place last week, I do think that this is a very thorough, comprehensive and effective budget. And I think it shows that we are investing tax dollars into the right places, as well as going out and gaining revenue from the places that we should be getting it, not just from the taxpayers. So I think that's really important. I want to thank Jamie and Barbara for doing such a fantastic job in putting all of that together, and they're back there chatting. And I, and I, I do want to say I've watched a few other budget meetings from other cities, and they don't always thank the finance team for doing the work they did, so I want to make sure that they are acknowledged. So thank you for that. I also want to thank our, our fire chief, I believe, for working, who, who was it that brought the Panthers, the Stanley Cup here? Who did that? Come on now. Okay. So.
I'm in.
Great, so here's the funny. So a couple of weeks ago, I found out that the Stanley Cup was going to be at a restaurant in Fort Lauderdale, and I found out about a half an hour before it was going to be there. So we rushed down there, and I happened to have a Dania Beach t-shirt on, in red, of all things. So it was perfect, so I got to take a picture with it at the time. And I talked to their hockey operations person, and I was trying to get him to come here and take a picture in front of that mural. Showed him the mural, texted it to him, sent him everything. He was working on it, and then in the meantime, it shows up here. So I just harassed that poor assistant coach until he came over and took pictures at our mural, and it was fabulous, so. Because that has got to be, I mean, when they walked up, their photographer was like, this is amazing. So it was great. So I was glad that we were able to do that, and thank you for whoever it was that helped to get that here, because I do think it was a necessary thing to come to the first city in Broward, where we have a giant panther on our City Hall garage. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, Commissioner Ramoli.
I have no comments tonight. Don't fall, fall down, that's all. We're all sitting down, it's a good thing. No, I do have one. Janet, great job on the mural. Coleman as well. Your entire committee did a great job, and I'm so proud to be part of your organization, and can't wait for that mural to go up.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoli. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good meeting, everybody. It was a good first fall meeting of the year, so I also want to remind everyone out there, whoever's listening, that it's still hurricane season. We're not out of the woods yet, so please stay diligent and stay prepared. And I think, what, hurricane season ends the middle of November now? It's pretty much like December 1st, it keeps extending. But just stay diligent, we're almost through it, everybody. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor Salvino?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that I'm very, very proud to be up here. Our city has worked very hard putting this budget together, and we've gone through a lot up here, dealing with agreeing and putting it together, and just our strategic planning, and all the things that have come into fruition from all the hard work from our city staff. And I couldn't be prouder to be working with all of them, and just very, very happy for everything they've done. I want to thank the staff personally. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I echo those comments, but I just wanted to, I will be very brief, because on Sunday night, around 7:30, 8:30, you know, we, I think we had gotten emails on a Sunday, maybe around 5:00, 6:00 or 7:00. By Sunday night, southeast 5th Avenue was flooded, southeast 10th Street and 11th Street, we got an email, and those guys mobilized like nobody's business to get out there, and, and the pump trucks were out there, and they were pumping that water. They, they, they mobilized and they worked so hard. And so I just want to thank Candino and the, and the Public Services Team for you guys coming in on the weekends, on, on that time, and working non-stop, because I was driving, I was like, oh, they're there already. And so I just want you guys to know how much that means. People, you know, we know it's going to rain in South Florida, but it really means something when our team is working so hard on those weekends. And so I also just want to echo and say thank you, our finance team, thank you to our City Manager and everybody who works on this budget. Thank you to all the directors who found 10.51% to reduce their budget so that we could reduce this and do the best job that we can. So thank you to my colleagues, thank you to the city, thank you, everybody, and happy fall, y'all. Let's have a good night. Thank you. I'm leaving a journey. Happy fall, y'all.